Number two is the agenda, tonight's agenda. To maintain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move public comment up to ten, sir.
Sir?
Move public comment up to ten.
Yep.
That's what it was. Permission.
What's your recommendation?
If you go up to action now.
All right. We'll move number nine to number six. All right. We have a motion to amend the agenda, move public comment up to number six. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All questions, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Chair, maintain a motion to approve the minutes, equal eight, meeting. Are motions, are second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Full superintendent information, Mr. Hunt.
We have my recognitions tonight. And we'll, I'll call out the name and then I'll let Mr. Patton hand these out. Lee Hindley, if you'd come. Mr. Moore, if you'd step in here with him, please, sir. And Mr. Culpepper as well. Just, Joe would briefly mention what the industry certification, I know that Miss Hindley worked very hard on it, what that means to our school.
I'll let her give you the details. Needless to say, it's a year-long process and it's a heap of work, but she can give you the details on it.
Basically, Blue Ridge Area Health Education Center and the Georgia Department of Education, they've collaborated with each other to come up with what they consider to be an industry-certified program. And they look, of course, at me, my qualifications, the curriculum, my lesson plans, my CTSO involvement as far as HOSA. And because we were approved for industry certification, we received a grant. That helped us update the lab, our equipment resources, those type things. And basically, what it all boils down to is just strengthening that CTAE program so that we just better prepare the students either to enter the healthcare field or to go on into a post-secondary program and study something in healthcare. So it has, it's been a year-long process. It's tough, but I'm proud that it's over.
After your students have completed your courses, can they exempt anything from Wiregrass or anything called?
We do have one articulation agreement with Wiregrass. Now, that doesn't have anything to do with industry certification. We've had that prior to this year. And if they choose to go to Wiregrass, I want to say it's maybe an 80 they have to complete on their test. I would have to look that up to be sure, but they could exempt like maybe the first health care class.
They have to have, they have to have an 80. Plus, they have to take an exemption test in order for them to get the college credit.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We've got some writing fair winners from exclusive summer outside the door, so we'll try to call your names loudly enough. Madeline Kitch. Okay. Desmond Stokes, first place, writing fair for first grade. First place, second grade. We'll have to get our principals to hand these out tomorrow. First place, third grade, Gracie Richardson.
She's not here.
Well, congratulations.
First place, fourth grade is Caitlin Holt. Caitlin Holt. First place, fifth grade, Morgan Land. The memo got out, does it? First place, writing fair, sixth grade is Ansley North. First place, seventh grade is Stormy Maxson. We might have a lot playing ball tonight, too. And first place, eighth grade is Elena Hires. First place, ninth grade is Taylor Blackburn. Not here, okay. And tenth grade winner, Shelby Frazier.
Shelby?
And for eleventh grade, Jessica Moon. And twelfth grade Jonathan Earp. Congratulations to all of these writers and for the work they put into that. And FCCLA, we have a region officer. Come on, Ms. Ortiz, and Brittany Lupo.
What is a leader? A visionary, capable person, someone who is reliable, and all of these qualities must make up a region officer because others look up to you. My main reason for becoming an officer was to be there for the members in FCCLA who have been through many hardships. I, as an officer, just wanted to set an example and be there for my members as a friend and not just an officer. My dream is to inspire others to believe in themselves and to always hold their heads high. To become a region officer, you must have patience because it's a long process. First, I had to create a folder listing all I had accomplished in FCCLA and my private information. Second, I had to list other accomplishments in school and had to have at least two letters of recommendation. Then I had to write an essay to explain why I wanted to serve as a region officer. And next, I had to seek approval from Mr. Humphrey, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Culpepper by having them sign lots of paperwork and hopefully that'd tire them out because there will be many of them. Finally, the board didn't believe me and I was accepted. My main duty as a region officer now is to represent Region Eight. In order to do so, I must go through many leadership trainings. Then I must attend many meetings to discuss what's going on in my region and to plan for our next meetings and events. This next part is when the nerves begin because I'm expected to perform skits and hand out many awards in front of hundreds of people. I'd like to thank Mr. Humphrey and Mr. Moore, Ms. Ortiz, and Mr. Culpepper for this opportunity.
Next, we have golf team members. Byron Ashburn. We're gonna get them all in here. We've got Josh Ramon. We've got John Raymond Moore.
Congratulations.
James Paschal. James, can you hear that?
James, good to be here.
Mickey Montgomery.
Didn't make it.
Okay. Tanner Corson.
Yeah, we're teaming in.
And for the ladies, Christina Peters.
She didn't make it either.
And Rachel Zarco. We're proud of these young men, Kevin. Do you have a word?
They went to bulk then and took on the new public-private separation of the area team. And I think it was like thirteen teams total. There were seven that brought boys golf players. We had five teams we were competing against. And the closest one to us was Charlton County and we beat them by three strokes. So we have the overall low medalist, Mr. Brian Ashburn. And we had Brian and Josh and, or Dylan, and John Raymond made the all-area team. So there were six members of the all-area team. We brought home the low medalist, three of the all-area, got a nice trophy. And they didn't put a plate on the back of it for them to put their names on, so I made them sign it. Fifty years, when somebody's cleaning out the trophy case, they'll know who it was.
I believe this is the first region or area, first place we've received since starting golf team, right?
I think so. We haven't been able to locate a trophy.
Right.
And we go to the state golf match. We're leaving early Sunday morning, then we'll play a practice round, spend the night in hotel in Commerce, Georgia, and get up and play eighteen holes Monday. And hopefully, we'll be bringing a little bit larger trophy back Tuesday, hopefully.
Well, good luck.
Good luck, big boys.
Y'all don't have caddies, do you? Y'all have to carry your own.
Unfortunately. Good job, folks.
Okay, we have the sixth grade math team we'd like to recognize for placing second, taking place at the BSU Math Tournament. A.J. Craig. And Sierra Barlow.
A.J.? He's A.J.?
Eli Douglas. Ansley North, and looks like we've got Coach.
Ms. Rogers, yes.
Ms. Rogers here. Would you like to say something about the competition?
Well, I just want to let you know what happened at the competition. BSU invites all the middle schools in the area to bring teams of four students per grade level. So we take four sixth graders, four seventh graders, four eighth graders. And Ms. Fickers gave these young people a test. And the highest scores were the four for the team. And it was optional, right, guys? Didn't have to do it, really. It's up to you. So they wanted to. And they go and they participate and compete against other like-grade students in the area. So A.J. came in third out of around seventy-five sixth graders in the area.
Wow, wow. Man, they're good.
Impressive, right? And then they take the four scores and add them together, make a team score. And our team came in second out of about twenty middle schools. And we're proud of all they do. We're proud of Ms. Culpepper, Ms. Fickers, Mr. Vergalis, everyone who helps firm our math program at the middle school.
Congratulations.
There's your math teachers.
Yeah.
They'll do it for you.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Hey, the new match, the donation item, the letter, we approved to go with revising our policy manual. And we'd already signed up for it. I got an email from Marvie Brooks, who is in charge of the process today. And she said they're already reviewing our manual. They're gonna set up a private site within a couple of weeks. Then she'll send us a chart with recommendations for each policy. And then she'll come to the district and I'll let you know when she's gonna be here. And then we will invite in folks that have responsibilities in the different areas, whether it's finance, personnel, instruction, students. And they will make decisions about what recommendations that we might want to make to the board and prepare a tentative adoption schedule. And as soon as they get the site constructed, she says we can move as quickly as possible. And once that's set up, I'll let you know so that anyone that would like to serve can go through the manual and see what they recommend that we do away with, what we add. Of course, the thing will still be up to the board as to what we do or don't do with it. I'm sure that we have plenty of things that are out of date and maybe some policies we've missed, so that's why we're going through this process. The CCRPI information came out. You might have seen something in the newspaper about it already. We've been trying to let you know about this for some time. I'd just like to mention, the first couple of pages I put on here, this kind of is a refresher of what these scores represent. And just keep in mind that these scores are from last year. They're not the scores we just completed. We just completed CCRCT and intercourse tests, and those scores will not be ready. I think they're supposed to be out, the CCRPI, for next year in October. It shows you how the points are calculated. On that second page at the bottom, you'll see that I put what our school's CCRPI scores are and the state averages and then the difference in the average. The primary school was a ninety-four point five. They did not give a state average for that. That's really third graders. Because we don't give CRCT, they cut that out a few years back, giving the CRCT at the primary schools. So what they do is they take the third grade scores and use it for that. Our elementary school was seventy-five point one and the state average was eighty-three point four. I know we've been back and forth, this is a whole harmless year, trying to email and get some information on why some of these scores were as they were. It's still a work in progress. The middle school had seventy-six point three, the state average was eighty-one point four. I believe that put us right about in the middle of the pack as far as our region. But we also know that the middle school missed out on ten points. I was talking to the Assistant Superintendent Varian today at a meeting. They missed those points exactly the way we did. And so we called and challenged it, but we didn't get any help except each division pointing their finger the other way, saying it was their fault, no, it was their fault. So we should get those ten points next year. And that would've looked a lot better, having an eighty-six point three. You really missed eleven points, didn't you?
Yes, right, right. We would've been at eighty-eight.
Which looked way ahead of state average. And the high school was seventy-four point three, the state average seventy-two point six. So we're a little bit above state average. And, uh, Culpepper, I'm not sure where he's at. I think like, Lounds was seventy-six something, so that gives you an idea. When you see that, I know we looked at those scores and some of the, generally, some of the leaders in scores, like Lounds County, were high, but they were like a seventy-six, I think about us was like a sixty-six. So they were very close there. We were a little bit higher than state average. I believe you looked and said we were kind of middle of the pack.
We're about middle of the pack in our recent district.
In this recent, for twelve. So this is the benchmark and we'll work on that, delve into it. Behind each of these, I put some of the ways they calculated those scores, so when you have a little more time, you can look at that. We're gonna be living with this for a long, long time. And it's kind of like when they came out with AYP and you learn how some of those scores are derived. And we're still trying to figure out how some of them are derived. Where's Ms. Serena, my statistician? I know she's worked on the, the formulas are very complicated, but how they come up with these and...
Very hard to replicate at the school level. You need a lot of information that the state's gathering as far as tracking and putting students in cohort groups. And they're taking rank on percentile-wise in that cohort group and then tell you if the student grew or not. And that's a little difficult to do at the school level.
And give an example of a student that had, an unnamed student that you have, and that was one of the ones, that is one of the top students that we have.
They, there was one student in particular that had like an eight-seventy-five on the math, which is exceeding. But based on their cohort, yeah, by large margin, based on their cohort, they had low growth. So we didn't get credit for that child because the students they were grouped with scored a little higher than a child, so.
And at that point, as high as those scores are, you said it could be two or three questions?
It could, yeah, it could.
So one of our students who was at the top of the CRCT range for our school, when graded with that...
Cohort, that's correct.
Cohort group that the state has was actually considered a low growth. Which just blows my mind. I think the state needs to look at that and we've asked them to look at that. But, so we're still, and they're still working out some of the problems involved with it. And I think we'll see it go up.
What does "whole harmless" mean?
It means...
"Whole harmless" for what?
Any penalties that might come from these scores this year. There are no penalties. The schools that last year scored in the lowest areas with the CRCT, they went ahead and related them as local performing schools and are giving them extra help, extra federal dollars. And we don't have any local performing schools.
So this is just a benchmark for us to begin with?
Right.
And we can only go up from here?
Absolutely. We're not going down.
But we don't have any schools that are low performing in these districts?
No. We do not. There's several in our recent district that we're not allowed.
What triggers that if it's below a certain score? Or what triggers the needs improvement, whatever that term is now?
Yeah, it's a different group and it depends on how low they are. They're gonna assign somebody to come and help that school. A school improvement specialist. There are so many across the state and depending on which school, they'll come to the school seventy days a week and try to help you pull those grades up. We don't have the plan to be in that group.
They start tracking the high school in the ninth grade? When they first entered the ninth grade, for the grade, wait, wait, right, four years from now? They go do that, correct?
Yes.
Well, that middle school, they track them?
There's a score in there for that, that, as you look through there, that little chart, you see that you've got overall, the achievement progress, then the gap scores, and you have challenge points. And some of those you'll see that they're trying to, to, on that second page of the information, with post-high, middle, elementary readiness, this looks at areas that have proven to help students be prepared for the next level of school. So they're measuring indicators such as percentage of students enrolled in meeting standards in world language class or percentage of students receiving industry certification exceeding. But they have that across the board. Now, there's a lot, there's a lot more to the CCRPI. This is just a little snapshot. It's very, very involved. And again, I didn't even want to print the flags and confuse you with that. You can go to the real website and look at those flags, but that's gonna be very confusing to parents. I think parents will kind of understand this. We've just gotta make sure they know that it's a whole harmless year and that it was, that this is last year's scores, not this year's.
I mean, before I seen improvement at middle school with the writing scores and everything?
Yes.
And we should fix an improvement off this?
Right. We missed a lot of points on closing gaps. And those are some of the things we've got to look at. Those progress points and achievement points. And that's why that two pager that I put in front, kind of gives you the explanation. And it'll take a little while to sort through it and probably to get used to it. But overall, I think it's a good thing. It's gonna give parents a lot of information. And it looks to improve schools in all areas. If we can just figure out math, how they do that, some of their analysis. And I'm sure we will. They're very good to help us, but this is one of those cases where the state is kind of still building airplane lots flying. We'll learn more as time goes on. We'll spend a lot of time on this in the next few weeks. We, these scores came out at the same time that our schools were preparing final days for the SACS visit. And then the CRCT scores came out at the same time. So it was like one paper for the other. Let's get the SACS teams taken care of, let's look at CRCT, and now we'll jump on CCRPI. So we'll have more information in the future, I promise you.
Do we have any STEM program certification that says we'll bring our next to credit?
No, not at this time.
What will we have to do to do that?
You have to have a certain number of courses and declare. Mr. Culpepper, you probably know a little bit more about that.
Miss Gano went to a session about two weeks ago to see what the qualifications for STEM programs are. There are, there's only a small handful in the state and they're centered around large, large schools where they can offer an engineering-specific pathway from ninth grade to twelfth grade, persistent courses. Looking at that information, what hurt, it's gonna be next impossible for us to do that with our student science. Lounds County is not currently STEM. Don't know if they're planning to go through it or not, but it's, you have to have a lot of students, but you have to have staff and force work and practicums for those kids. You're looking at, you're looking at having to have certain staff members if we do it the way they have proposed currently.
But we wanted somebody to attend that, so we'd have the information.
We wanted to look and see what it was because we had the same question you had. That's something we can get credit for, so we've been looking into it to see what the availability is. So we're looking at that and every other option we have to be insured. But I don't think being STEM certified at this point's gonna be feasible without just...
Will we offer physics?
We do offer physics. We haven't had any tapers on it. But we do offer AP chemistry. We've got enough kids to take AP chemistry next year, we're offering AP chemistry next year. Hopefully, as we continue to add those courses, we will be able to add physics on this place. Possibly in the place of physical science as they come in ninth grade.
I know this has been a goal at the high school since Mr. Culpepper's been there, to add these AP classes, trying to add two per year and build on that.
We just tested AP calculus last week. We had five of the nine students take the AP test. I hope to have at least two, two good, high-passing schools out of that based on how their skills felt. We've got AP government being tested this week. We'll kind of poll those students and see how well they're doing too. We've got, I think, twelve students in there taking the test, twelve out of seventeen. We hope that we get several passing scores there. That way, those kids can go to college with college credit under their belt before they ever enroll in school.
Does our students have to pay for that AP test for how they...
Yes, they do. I paid for half this year, they paid for half because I had a number that we're not gonna take it at all because of the money, because they're in two classes, it's ninety bucks a shot, basically, four hundred and eighty dollars to take both tests. And if they're seniors and they're paying for all their senior stuff, money gets tight. So I paid for half of that, that's my account at the school this year. I think Moore would've taken the test had we paid for the whole, the whole amount. We're still going forward, going to the team.
Okay. Okay, under H, the athletic proposal for FY fourteen, I spoke with our athletic director. It was tabled at the last meeting and uh, it was decided that that proposal would be withdrawn. Um, under I, I've just put a note in here that says SACS teams, they visited on the seventh and eighth. Uh, I was able to make the exit reports for three of the schools. I didn't make the high school. But uh, heard a lot of very complimentary remarks about each of the schools and the staff. And uh, everything from the effectiveness of the schools, um, just across the board to the teaching. They they made it clear that when they were walking into classrooms and um, observing, they really weren't observing the teachers. They were observing the kids because they want to see students engaged in learning. And they know the teachers know the material. And I think one of the areas that we got marked down, I think every school, uh, we have a lot of technology. We have smart boards and things like that, but they wanted to see more students using it. And like they said, they are, they're in there for twenty minutes. And they might have been there for twenty minutes and walked out and then it was the kid's time to have hands on, so. But that's just a big push nationally, um, with advanced ed. And I think they were pretty much looking to find every school because there wasn't much that was negative. They make commendations. They make remarks of things that schools uh, can work on. That don't count against them at all and they could feel free to work on or not. They may, you know, have other things in their improvement plan. And they make a couple of things, two or three, that are are mandatory for them to work on. And I think they said, principals correct me if I'm wrong, that within two years, they'll be sending you some kind of a template. Here's how you can reach that goal. And they all seem pretty easy to maybe for your schools to reach. Um, what they'll do is they'll write that report up and they'll send a copy of it back to the principals. Um, but then they will send that same copy to advanced ed. They they only meet twice a year. And they're trying to get it ready for them to vote on it in June. Uh, the teams are recommending re- accreditation continue at all of our schools. And advanced ed will will just vote on it and then send the nice little suitable for framing. Um, that, you know, items that we can put up to to brag about. But I appreciate all that that uh, the schools have done. It was a ton of work. A lot of uh, work, principals, staff, and. I was just really impressed with what I saw at all of our schools. So congratulations to our schools. Next. Should be. I don't have it. There it is. The proposed policy and Miss Suzanne, you might want to speak at this because you're the one that developed uh.
I think one of our earlier meetings, we asked Suzanne to give Harvey and Hartley to work on, uh, starting to draft a policy for us in regards to personnel, impetus and so forth. And so this is our first, um, pass at it, so.
The first one I submitted and talked with the firm about, it was too specific. What they came back with me was that the policy does not need to be specific. It needs to be written in such a way to cover all kinds of situations. And uh, so that's pretty much I took their recommendations, went back in and and um, tried to make it as broad and as general as I could to cover any situation which may arise. Worked with Marlene Brooks, or Marvin Brooks, in Hartley. So this is, this is the work product that we came up with.
And what we'd like, what I'd like to do is also give this some more time and then if the board members want to comment or have ideas or recommendation on that. If you could forward those to Suzanne or myself and then we can continue to work on it. If that's in agreement?
Yes.
Anything else to add? Okay, and that takes us through the superintendent information and uh, and then we'll move to action items.
The first action item is something we've been doing for the last few years. Uh, hopefully we don't need these numbers. This is really the exact same we approved the last year. Which just allows local boards of education to uh, increase the class size if if it's needed. A lot of times we were running into, under the old class size rule where you'd have to be two or three kids over. And this allows us the flexibility of not having to hire a new teacher. Which as we know is the biggest expense item in our budget is personnel expenses. Um, we certainly don't expect to uh, to cover some of these numbers. Uh, some are for just certain situations, but we just, it gives us the flexibility. And then the principals uh, will stay on top of class size. Which one of the areas that we were really trying to reduce in class size was with some of the new hires. Particularly in PE where we had uh, one person and a parent pro with like fifty kids and that's just too many. So that was one of the things we gave was adding a PE teacher. We'll add others as as needed. I think we're adding one or two at the middle school. Mr. Kupfer's desk was speaking of math teachers. But we're in pretty good shape everywhere else. So we will, we will need to move on this to allow us the flexibility.
Can I ask you a question off the top?
Yes, sir.
Uh, how many would that put in the English language learner class that you get as viable?
I didn't bring the state scale in there, so um, I'm not sure. Um, Mr. Kupfer, where are you at? What's the class size for that? Can you?
I'm not sure, but we do not have an English language learner class separate from the other classes because we have to have a teacher who is endorsed and um, we serve those students in other capacities rather than having a separate classroom. So that one is really not applicable if um, if I'm not going to add that.
How about your special ed classes? How many would that put in there?
Usually, um, depending on your disabilities determines your class size. So um, you would look at if you average seven or eight, it could go up to twelve or thirteen. Again, your uh, the disabilities cluster together determines your class size.
About your alternative education program, can you put it in there?
Again, I should have pulled that and I can get it for you afterwards, what the state requirement is. Thank you, ma'am. And which class were you asking about? The uh.
ELL.
Oh, I think she answered that already.
Alternative ed tech.
I'm not even sure that all schools in here. Some last, some real. I do not see an alternative school limits. They they might not have a limit.
Alternative, so it used to be eighteen. I'm not sure if that's.
I mean. Eighteen.
What used to be.
Here we go. Right. Um, with no parent pro, and we had a parent pro this year, it's eighteen. With a parent pro, it's twenty-four. But I don't think there was any time we had that many students in there, was there?
We got close sometimes, I think, but we never hit eighteen.
So you can act out of thirty-four with just what your proposal. Is that what I'm assuming, JJ?
If you have ten more, you have forty-four for the parent pro.
Well, we don't have a parent pro in there this year.
So then you can act out of twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. But I.
Eighteen's packed.
If we go eighteen and I look back, it'll be packed.
And that's uh, again, that gives you flexibility. Some of these kids are in and out sometime. We'll start out the year with only a handful. And then we try to get them out after they've served a semester on a behavioral contract. So we're trying to leave them there. We try to say, okay, you've done a semester. If you've been doing your work, behave yourself. We're going to put you on a behavioral contract. Go back to the regular classroom. And that frees up seats for others, but it also lets the student get back into the regular flow. And as long as they don't get into any serious trouble, then, you know, they don't have to go back. If they get into a serious incident, part of that contract says, then you will automatically go back to alternative school. And a lot of times because of our policy, when we have students that are locked up. DJJ picks them up and they're, and they automatically go there. Um, and then some parents actually sign waivers to put their children there. Uh, we've had some. I was, when I was talking with Miss Ham about the other day. And she had pleaded with that parent not to put her child, but she thought the child would be, would learn a lesson and would be better in there. So um, all of these aren't, the worst of the worst, but some of them do need some separation from mainstream education in it.
How about the R, R E P, the remedial education program?
You can start getting me a list of questions I got to time.
Too much of a picture.
I had to work, work my way up. Fine arts. Remedial, uh, eighteen.
Eighteen. What we can put now, so five more, that'd act out twenty-three.
I won't ask you more.
You can keep that.
The question would be, um, we've we've passed the resolution in the past about, but are we, are we exceeding any of these now?
Yes, we're exceeding some individual class sizes, not by a lot of students. And uh, principals would have firsthand knowledge. There's, there's not many.
Two gifted classes in Fall where we exceeded, uh, ninth and tenth. Because we had, we had set our classes and then we had an influx of some students that were gifted and they had places in there. But not in R E P.
And no, not R E P. And then PE was jam-packed and we got concerned about that. Being a safety issue as much as anything.
If a kid's in one parent pro, that's, teacher one parent pro, that's all kids in the group.
But but on core classes or whatever, we're not exceeding in in.
Any core classes that you're seeing?
I have the same similar situation as Mr. Kupfer. I just had a gifted seventh grade that were, we were at twenty-nine.
I don't want some math teachers. They will be in math.
We we really try to hold the line on that and the principals let me know when it's, when it's too tight. And if it gets, you know, really too bad, we're not going to go up to ten kids. We're not going to do that. But it's just better to put that down. If you say, all right, we're going to go five of them and then that sixth kid comes. Well, tha- that's why we do that. We're not going to go that high, but um, yes, ma'am.
But with R E P and E I P, which is the early intervention education and remedial education program. I would recommend that we not even go to that point at all. And we've got those students that are needing additional assistance. I would not go beyond what the current maximum class size is, even though you have a waiver there. I don't think it's in the best interest for us to go over or even come close to that.
And and that's why a lot of times you don't know until school starts and they all show up and we see where they're at. And if we have to hire another teacher, then we will. We'll come back to you and say, we need another teacher.
And this is part of this is funding purposes.
It's completely about funding. Um, and E I P is a higher, it's funded at a higher rate than regular ed.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair, Chair would entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both?
Thank you. Okay, in your packet, one that did a great job reducing down, we we approved um, Each of the schematics for middle and high school, but there was a change and you wanted the outside doors to be buzzed in. Uh, that's the same thing that's in your packet, just just a little larger. And the adjusted cost, um, the the only other thing that that you haven't seen until this was mailed to you is the proposed modifications at the middle school. Um, Miss Ham took a look at that and felt like there could be better use of the space. If uh, if we kind of turn some things around a little bit. And so we kind of switched where the lobby workroom room is and where her office is listed on this. It's going to be long and narrow and close quarters, but um, we went in there and measured ourselves and um, and it's very doable. And we just kind of moved one wall over there where the guidance counselor will have this entrance to her office. And we'll have one entrance into the middle school, um, office area. Once they're buzzed into that front door, they'll be viewed at that window. And the only way they can go is to that lobby workroom. That's the door. And they can't go further up that hallway. Those are electronic storefront doors. Um, there that leads up to the seventh, eighth grade hallway and then also down there that goes to the sixth grade hallway. So with those few little modifications, um, those are the prices. Remember, these are the estimated prices that um, that Glenn Gregory has sent. Um, I have a um, sheet that I'd like for each of you to take a look at because I talked with Glenn today. And um, we're going to have to have a call meeting. Suzanne, would you just? Move this around there. I blank out my calendar here. What we had to do, because we're still operating on short timeframe. And Mr. Gregory had it in his mind that he needed to have it finished by the end of August. And I said, no, we need to have it finished by uh, the next, the last week at the very latest uh, in in June. So, I mean, July, the twenty-sixth. So what we have here is is that June fourth is is when he's going to open bids. And he will be here and be done here at the board office and we will really need a call meeting. Reason being, um, to try to get the process started quickly. Uh, when we open those bids, he'll be here to certify that that they meet all the requirements for, as a contractor, for what they're going to run in the paper. Uh, they're running local paper, they're running, but I lost the paper. And but they'll make, he'll make sure as an architect that they meet um, the requirements that are needed. Uh, there's going to be a pre-bid meeting here on May the twenty-eighth, so, but you don't need to be here for that. That gives us time for them to run into papers and then anybody who wants to go, you know, show up and get uh, some of the uh, the drawings where they can. And then anybody who wants to go, you know, show up and get some of the drawings where they can then make a bid. We also put a limited damage penalty of five hundred dollars a day if they go beyond July twenty-sixth. But on June four, if you can be here for opening the bids at three, where we can go ahead and vote to go forward whichever bid we want or either not go for. But I think everybody's pretty much agreement that's what we can do. And Charlie is hiding some of that work right there. But we really think we can squeeze all this out of this year's budget. John, we think we can squeeze pretty much all this out of this year's budget.
Yes, we can squeeze it out of what we did for...
And we only had fifty thousand there, but some other in. So that will look better on next year's budget, not going to have to put that in there. But let's just hope for low bid of a good contractor.
Okay. Any questions?
I need for them to approve this, if this is what we're going to go with, and then he will get the final.
Okay. You have the package there. Chair intends to motion to approve this present.
So...
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? No questions, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
The next thing that we have is a bid from Verco. They manufacture all types of school equipment. I talked with Ms. Dixon, she wanted to replace all of the chairs in the middle and high school cafeteria. We've got chairs that are different shades of red, some of them look pink. And so they were purchased about twelve years ago. And she has the money in her account to purchase these. She said it'll be federal dollars paying for this. And since this is, since the quota is through U.S. Communities, it's already been bid out by the state and we don't have to seek pre-bids on it. That the state's already bid and gotten a low prices for each of these units. And so that's what she's going to recommend. She recommends that it, that the chairs be black.
Okay. Questions?
The Verco chair, frankly, I just looked at it and just thought I would do a pickup check on it. If you look online, those are not different from School Outfitters. It's got the phone number eight-hundred-two-six-zero-two-seven-seven-six. They offer this same chair, eighteen inch, by Verco for twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Try a lot of money, but still eight times three hundred, that's twenty-four hundred dollars. They'd go to you somewhere else. I just wanted to suggest it.
But is that approved?
Is, what's the name of that company?
School Outfitters and it's the same Verco nine thousand series school chair. Same chair.
I mean, the vendor has to be approved.
I just thought I'd suggest it.
Why would I say that chair was?
Twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
And I'm not sure by that company. I know that we use Verco for the, pretty much everything at the new elementary school. They're very good to work with. If it's still Verco, and it uses that same model, I'm sure that Clay would love to save money.
I would suggest this, then, if that's approved as we are and that, if we can...
Find out the amount.
And we'd certainly rather do that.
Right, so if we can approve the purchase from Verco and if we can get it through, you know, I don't really know how that works.
I think we're always driven to that save money, so.
I could just, not Verco, just purchase the chairs and go with the low bid, right? Because that's not Verco you're talking about.
That's a Verco chair, but it's put out by School Outfitters.
The issue is this through, this vendor has gone through the state bidding process, so we don't have to get through this.
So Verco is not your vendor, even though it's on the letterhead like that?
Oh, no, is it?
Yeah, Verco's the vendor.
But this one is approved through the state, so we don't have to get through there. So if we...
We all know that School Outfitters is approved by the state.
That's correct, sorry. So are we all in agreement with what we're doing there?
Purchase chairs at the best price possible.
Correct, so if I can give a motion on that.
Will this take care of all the tables, all the tables we have in chairs in?
Yes, and I think there are two or three tables she's going to have to replace. But she didn't have to do that bid. You know, when it gets more than ten thousand dollars, we have to have pre-bids. But she didn't have to have it because it came through bids. I will make sure she looks at that.
Intends to motion to purchase the chairs, that would be the lowest cost. Have a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have really two things together. There's a middle school field trip request. Rita Creighton here, you already had a field trip approved and that fell through. And so she came up with the idea for rewards. It's a different reward date, they're going to go to the movies. And parents will sign off on allowing them to go see the movie, which movie it is, et cetera. So that, that gives them their C T reward date. And then the fundraiser is baked goods to be sold before morning announcements. Raise money for cheerleading uniforms to start May fifteenth, just runs for that three weeks. Which, you don't have much time left in school anymore.
Yes, if that's okay with everyone, we'll take both of those in one motion, please.
So...
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Frank, if we go any further, I want to say thank you to Serena for canceling the field trip for the fifth grade to Wild Adventures because it absolutely flooded. We went on the Jacksonville trip and it absolutely wet. And if you wanted to see the monkeys play in the rain, it was just awful. So thank you, Serena, for canceling that because those kids would have done nothing but sit up under showers, so.
They would close the rides down so they wouldn't do anything.
Thank you for that.
All right, next we'll move to number six, which is now public comment. So if we've had anyone to sign up for the public comment, now would be the time, okay?
I'm just here as a concerned parent for middle school. Both of my kids will be playing middle school ball next year, one of them played this year. And just reading the paper and things like that, that there's not going to be assistant coaches. And I just feel as a parent out there and as a teacher that you need assistants. You need people besides just one person out there seeing about twenty or twenty-five boys and girls because I just know how it is as a classroom teacher, that you just need that help. So I just appreciate it if y'all have not decided on it, that y'all just decide to let these head coaches of the teams have an assistant, a certified assistant. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Thornberry?
She had to leave, her kid got hurt at the ballpark.
Okay, any others? All right. Move to number seven, personnel contract services. Recommendations.
That colleague was just missed and left off of the last one. Get all the names, that was just an oversight, but we did warn her back. And Kristen Doian would be a new middle school reading teacher. The resignations, we have Mr. Viget, who had been a parent pro at the high school. We're planning on having a full-time alternative school teacher there, so we won't need a parent pro. But Mr. Viget was moving on. And Ms. Byrd, a high school special ed teacher, has resigned to take a position closer to home, I believe, is what it looks.
Okay. If it's a pleasure, boy, we'll take all of those together. If so, then I intend a motion.
So...
Have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Charlie, some financial information.
We were able to get our midterm allotment sheet from the state and hold a financial statement that I put in for April the thirtieth. The original budget is what we all approved last year. And we started out with revenues and expenditures. And then now that our state allotment sheet has come in, we revised the revenue to reflect the midterm increase that we got of one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. We haven't changed any of the expenditures of the ones that we had made already. So our financials are looking pretty good today, or really actually looking great. At eighty-three percent of the year, our revenue was dead on the money at eighty-three percent. And I talked to Rebecca Rampe Friday. She's received some money coming in from public utilities, so we should get more local funds here any day. Our expenditures are continuing to hold steady. Since we have a big line item that won't be in till June, they're about at eighty percent. So we're looking to finish out the year strong in financials. And we've been also working on the FY fourteen budget. And I have a memo me and Mr. Humphrey got today to give y'all an idea of a timeline that we can go with as far as getting the FY fourteen budget approved. They're meeting this week with the principals, Mr. Humphrey is meeting this week. Those E I P numbers and class sizes and forecasting on how many teachers we need, which is primarily the budget, is, that's going on this week. The numbers are in and so we're going to be putting that together and letting them know how much it's going to cost us. What we're looking to do is by May thirty-first, have a draft that we can send out in the board packets. June the tenth, regular meeting, we can tentatively approve a budget. It'll have to be advertised one time. We were going to run that ad on June the twentieth. And we'll need to have a call meeting on the twenty-seventh to formally adopt the budget. Or we'll have to have a spend resolution for July one. We have got to have a budget in place. And this is a budget, the revenue numbers, we had forecasted those. And the allotment sheet that we got in from the state come in. I think it was only maybe a fifty thousand dollar difference, which was to our favor actually. So, you know, this budget needs to be approved and then we'll be ready to be up and going July one. And, you know, as the year progresses, we can always, you know, make amendments as needed. But that gives y'all an idea of what we're looking at. See all the able to sort of get all approved. Any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
On the construction that we're talking about for the schools?
Yes.
I know in the budget we have fifty thousand capital. If it's over that fifty, which from what we're seeing tonight, it most likely will be.
We actually have, we've, if you look on here, maintenance is our, it's about the middle of the expenditure. That's in its own function. We had nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars budgeted for maintenance. That's your light bills, that's your southern management plan, that's your everything, what we call maintenance operations, keep the doors open. Right now, we have a balance of two sixty-two. And the money that's going to be left in there, you can see that we're eighty-three percent of the year complete, but our maintenance budget is only seventy-three percent. That extra, basically, we hadn't spent as much as we'd budgeted in supplies. We hadn't spent as much as we've budgeted in purchased services. That is going to go to make up the difference. If, it may even pay for the whole thing, it's just waiting to see in June.
Okay.
That's where it's going to come from.
All right. Questions?
Let off these. We have taken, I overlooked at it where we were...
We're permitted for holding down the lottery.
Yep. Yep, we have an energy bar. We have our own cat until what? Yes. We actually do, you know, try to manage our, everything is looked at, you know, very closely. But, you know, like we've said before, if the request comes in and it's found, you know, we try every way to fund it. We've really benefited from some good revenues too.
All right. Thank you, Charlie.
Welcome.
I think that's all we have on our...